It's nine o'clock and I'll call the meeting of the Benton County Board of Commissioners to order. We open with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We've got a little crowd today. Probably the biggest one we've had since COVID started, I think. We'll start with a roll call. Please read the roll. Vicki?
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Bowley?
Here.
Commissioner Burdick?
Here.
Commissioner Peschel?
Here.
Here.
Okay. Next item we have is to approve or amend the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No changes.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chair is read.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? I mean, none or call question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have open forum. This is public input and informational matters not requiring action by the board. And we have a couple of gentlemen signed up, Rod Kapinski, Jim Stodansky. I don't know if you get a chance to read the little sheet up there that explains how the open forum section works. If not, I can remind you a little bit here. The purpose of the open forum meeting, section of the county board meeting is to allow public input or information to be presented to the board that does not require action by the board. Personal attacks of any kind against another person are not allowed. Campaign-style presentations are not allowed. The normal time limit is five minutes per speaker. The time limit may be shortened or extended at my discretion. All information or all input or information is to be addressed to the board of commissioners and not to anyone in the audience. Speaker handouts, if you have any, are public information. Okay, and we'll try and make, we all understand this, so I'll try and make sure that we follow this open forum policy. So first up, we have Rod Kapinski and Jim Stodansky. It seems like you're hearing perhaps the same item. I'm not sure. Okay, so why do you want to come up, both of you, or? Okay, and introduce yourself and what your address is and tell us what you got here.
Thank you. Rod Kapinski, RGX Excavating, 4996 75th Avenue, Northeast Stock Rabbits. What I'm here for today is I want to thank Commissioner Bowley and Commissioner Peschel for coming out. We have a driveway issue at my shop. What's, what happened last year is we have a cluster development next to my property, which is not an issue at all. It was proposed, it was gone through planning and zoning and scrutinizing, gone through and approved. It went through the commissioner board, scrutinized and approved. The drawings for the driveways where they were supposed to be and where they are were approved. Three weeks after, everything was gavelled on both ends, on both boards. All of a sudden driveways start changing, entrances start changing. It was stated in the minutes of the meetings at the time that my driveway was not to be used. I have a commercial excavating business and they're proposing and putting a residential driveway added on to my driveway. I don't know how that's going to work for in the future, but something's bugging me about this thing and I don't know what it is. I'm having a hard time letting it go. I really need to keep my place secure. If somebody mistakesens driveways and they're driving around and seeing what equipment I have or this or that, whatever, I have no idea what, what I can really do there. But it specifically said my driveway was not going to be shared or used for any other purpose. So therefore, it kind of starts when I bought the property. The driveway was on my property. I built my shop according to that driveway. I built, I put all the asphalt around the front of the shop. It's been there 16 years. Never had an issue until this came up. And I really don't care to redo what I have to do and worry about whose snow is blowing on whose side, if we're getting something dirty or they're doing this and that. Just kind of skip to the chase here. It's pinning neighbors against neighbors and friends against friends here. I don't know why, I kind of know why, but I don't like the change. Without any public hearing on the change, I kind of feel that you guys are kind of skipped out on the change after it happened. So therefore, I invited Jake and Warren out. They expressed what they kind of thought. I think it was kind of a different kind of reaction and it wasn't in the right, right direction. But it kind of excluded both planning and zoning and commissioner board on what you guys gavelled. And it's, it's kind of a weird deal that, I don't know if people just don't say anything after a change or what, but I, I'm not against the neighbor building this development. It's not a problem. But I really don't know how this is really going to work out and I have to live with it every day. And Jake has been out there and Warren's been out there. They know the physical hill and the entrance ways and all this other stuff and what's been explained, but I am assuming and I'd wish there'd be another public meeting on it to relook at this driveway issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more gentleman, the same issue.
Good morning. Forget about the frog in the throat this minute. Jim Stodansky, 5115 75th Avenue, Northeast Stock Rabbits. I'm right across the road from Rod's and the same thing here, you know, this was all decided and voted on by the zoning board and by the commission board to okay it the way it was. All of a sudden the driveways changed and we have everybody out there for that and engineer, and they had put in a couple of green lines on each side of the hill. South of them green lines or north of that green line is unsafe, but yet they're going to add on to his driveway, which is south of that green line. So it makes no sense. It was good the way they initially had put them in there. That would have worked fine. And he wouldn't have had to worry about a field address there because he'd have had it. So, but yeah, to have it both voted on both ways and then without being notified that it was going to change, it just changed. So it would have been nice to have some type of a meeting even before the zoning board meeting, to have a meeting of what was going to go on and so that you could make better decision there. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? That was it for the open forum section. Next, next item we have is the consent agenda. Approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of July 21st, 2020. Item two, accept and file committee of the whole minutes of July 13th to 2020. Item three, accept and file committee of the whole minutes of July 14th, 2020. Item four, approve language line contract. Item five, approve contract with Clime Theater to provide educational materials related to aquatic invasive species. Do any members want any of these items pulled for further discussion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any more discussion? I mean, none or call question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consented, agenda is adopted. Next up, we have Sheriff Heck with a public commentary on sheriff's use of unmanned aerial vehicles. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Ministers. Here before the board today because in the regular session of the 2020 legislative term, the legislature passed statute which laid out several new requirements for law enforcement related to the use of unmanned aerial vehicles or drones. One of those requirements is that the board, which approves the budget for the law enforcement agency, have a public comment period to allow folks to provide comments on our policy and our use of drones. Just for your information, we purchased our drones in early 2020 before this law was passed and we have used our drones on several occasions, most of which have been missing person cases. But we anticipate that we'd be using these as well for search and rescue, for apprehending wanted persons, for documenting crime scenes. There's a whole lot of things that you can do with that eye in the sky look that's going to really aid in our law enforcement work. The statute requires us to, besides have this comment period, have a policy, which we do have and we are working on updating to comply with these new requirements. It also requires that when law enforcement put the drone up in the air, they have a search warrant, which is honestly a bit of, well, it's an impediment to acting quickly. So in, in regards to that, the legislature carved out a number of exceptions to that search warrant requirement. They have nine of them that are listed in the statute. And I think they do a good job of recognizing kind of the urgent nature of some of the reasons we might need to use this drone. And so I anticipate that we should be able to continue to use this drone as we had intended. And the statute is going to assist in, I believe, what was the intent, to help balance out privacy interests in the public. So with that, we did post on our social media sites that we were having this. We sent a press release out to the media to let them know that people could come and provide their comments here. And with that, I'll, I'll end my comments. I do have eight comments that appeared on our social media site. Not sure what the process will be to get those into the record or not.
I agree, I guess if you just read them.
Sure. All right, I'll, I'll read them very quickly. First one says, "I think it's a good idea if you do nothing wrong. You have nothing to worry about." Next comment, "Thorough documentation of each incident where used is warranted." Next comment says, "I think search and rescue abilities are worth it in emergencies. I don't think anyone wants to be patrolled by a flying robo-cop, though." Next comment, "I think you should be able to use whatever tools are needed to help in this day and age." Next comment says, "Can you say more spying?" Next one, "Do whatever you have to do to keep law and order." And then one person replied to that comment saying, "What are, what are you nuts?" And the final comment says, "Yes, they are great. I can't confirm or deny if I may have gotten a speeding ticket from a UAV in Miami, Florida in 2012." One other thing I should mention in the current law, we're prohibited from putting facial recognition technology or biometric technology on our warrants unless, excuse me, on our drones unless authorized by warrants. We're not allowed to equip our drones with weapons. Not sure why that was necessary. And we're not allowed to use drones to collect data on public protests unless it meets one of the nine exceptions or we have a warrant. So with that, I guess I'll yield the microphone to anybody else.
I have a question. You said you want to, your request here is to hold a public comment period. A public comment period has started already with your social media or, and how long does it go on?
So in reading the statute, my understanding is we're required to have a public comment period here at the meeting. So the, the comments on the social media, I don't think that was really meeting the, the idea behind the law, but I figured, well, as long as they're out there, I might as well bring them to the meeting.
So we have to set a time limit on the public comment period, you know, for a certain, time certain?
This is the time.
I believe that, my understanding is at this time, we just need to allow a certain amount of time for those present to make comments on this.
Okay. Is there a recommendation, still amount of time?
Well, I guess I'm not sure. How many people we have here, I'd recommend perhaps 10 minutes at most.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you meant a calendar date, like a two weeks to do it or something?
No, I, I think just a few minutes right here, right now.
This is, this is like a hearing. It's not, we're asking for a public comment period.
Right.
Usually that's a time period certain for a month or something. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yes?
Troy, this drone is used not only by your department, but other, other departments or not?
It is available to all other departments and we have worked with highway in particular this year to get some footage for them and also with our emergency management director.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Do you have two, two drones that I read in paper or just one?
We have two, yes.
Okay. Any questions from? From any, any of the members? We're reading, we're reading the letter from Jim Hovde. He's here to speak. Tell Spencer, Jim, Jim Hovde is here to speak, I think. If it's a public comment period, I guess, I guess they can speak, yeah. Okay. It's a little different than a public hearing.
Indeed.
Like we're used to operating under, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so Jim, if you wanted to say some, something, yeah, as long as it's, it's a public comment period, so introduce yourself and we know you, but maybe nobody else does, yeah.
Well, good morning, gentlemen. For those of you who know me, you want to know how I got my black eye? Suggested to my wife that she could lose a few pounds. That didn't work out well, so I decided not to call the sheriff, but had some cancer stuff removed from the side of my head and I guess that's a byproduct of the, of the issue. I guess what I, I'd like to say, and you've got copies of my comments, you know, on many of the law enforcement vehicles, you'll see the words displayed, protect and serve. And they're, they're there in that, in that order for a very specific reason. Protect citizens' lives and serve them in the needs of rescue and the sheriff talked about earlier. I think the UAV program does that and more. Located fugitives who in many cases are a very direct threat to the citizens' lives and safety, including people if they're lost, if not found, could die. In both cases, law enforcement, this law enforcement tool can act as a multiplier of law enforcement people. Where he might have to recruit lots of people from other agencies and on and on and on. This, this piece of equipment can eliminate the need for a lot of people. A kid lost in a cornfield or whatever, they can find that in a little bit. They also have a capability that's really nice is a UA, is a heat-seeking thing which can find people. And for those of you who own pets, they have recovered pets from people and that is a big deal. It's like a family member. I guess the last most over, most usually overlooked, the recorded data can be used to educate judge judges, prosecutors and juries to visualize an accident or crime scene to better really understand what has happened here. I would really strongly encourage the commissioners to, to fund to the fullest the UAV program if the sheriff so requests and needs funding. I guess, any questions? I've talked to people in the neighborhood. They think that's a great, great tool and who knows, it could be used to save you or I.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your comment, Jim.
Okay. I guess, is there? Anyone else or anyone, anything else to enter into the public comment section here? If not, I guess that, does that take care of that item then?
I believe so, yes. I, I just like it noted in the minutes that the comment period was opened and received comment and closed, and I think that'll satisfy our statutory requirement.
Oh, very good. All right. Hope that does it. Yep. Thank you, Sheriff. Really interesting. Oh, you've got another item on your approval contract with Centricare for?
I do, yes.
2021 jail medical. Here we go.
Indeed. I brought before you the proposed contract for our 2021 jail medical services. We've engaged with Centricare since May of 2017. As I noted in my agenda item request, we've been very happy with the services we've been receiving from Centricare and we're excited to continue to partner with them. We think that the, the depth of knowledge and the depth of records that they bring to our jail medical aides in us being able to more effectively and more efficiently treat people in the jail. We believe that their price is in line with what we would see from other jail medical providers. And as I mentioned in our agenda item request, we have concerns about annually going out and asking for prices when we're not, we wouldn't necessarily be changing. So our recommendation at this point is to sign the contract with Centricare. We believe that our current level of funding in our jail medical We believe that our current level of funding in our jail medical budget is going to support this increase due to the fact that we do have lower jail population at the moment, and we anticipate it's probably going to be at least mid-year of 2021 before that builds back up to pre-COVID levels. Assuming that that is the way it plays out, fewer medical visits by inmates having to go to the hospital and dentists and such like that, we believe are going to result in savings that are going to allow us to cover this increased cost for our care. So if the commissioners have any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess that's pretty standard in a lot of, in a lot of these healthcare issues. You know, you go out every year, it's good to go two, three years.
Indeed.
I know it is. All right, any comments?
One question I have is price transparency. You know, did you get other quotes? I'm just reading here that, if you can get other quotes, and you'll use them, they will quit quoting probably. But did you get other quotes, or?
We did not get additional quotes this year. When we look back on the records we had from the previous years, well, from last year, Centricare came in as the least expensive. And when we're looking at the numbers that were coming at us from the other medical providers last year, when considering the total cost because of the records management component that would need to come in, this $201,600 is still in line with what they were quoting us in 2020.
And we have, but our people in the jails cut down about half for last year, right?
Right. And we are, we're basically at the bare minimum amount of services that we could have in our jail and still maintain our certification through DOC.
I know the Highway Department, if they have over a certain size, they have to have more than one bid, and, you know, I've worked like this. I'm not sure if that applies to this or not. Monty, do you know if it's required by law to get more than one bid on government contracting?
The kind of terms of is that services are subject to the municipal bid requirement. So it's certainly good practice, of course, to get bids on occasion, but in this instance, it wouldn't be required.
Maybe every couple of years or something, we should get a bid, just to make sure they're still in line for other.
I think we did that on our own healthcare here too, didn't we? We went two or three years.
Well, that's a statutory requirement to put your health insurance up to bid every, it's either three or five.
Three, okay.
It's required by law.
Yeah, but that's not here, yeah, okay.
Troy, that 12% increase, was that, was that talked about last year in that contract?
We've been having conversations with Centricare about their compensation for probably, well, two to three years now. I think one of the, when they came into this game of jail medicine, I think they may have underestimated what it required. And when they came into the game, I believe that their intent was to try to make sure that they would match the price we were getting from an already discounted provider. So what they're, what we're trying to do is trying to work back up to a level that's acceptable both to them and to us to continue the relationship. So it's been an ongoing conversation for several years.
Mr. Chair. It just seems like they're always coming with a rate increase. I mean, I know we're happy with the service and that, but, you know, as we sit up here, we're probably not real happy with the 12%. The other part is that, I understand from last year, is that they only do two counties, right? Benton and Stearns are the only counties they're doing, am I correct?
Correct.
I mean, that just seems a little odd to me that they're doing two counties that are right in their backyard, and they're not going out, and if it's a profitable deal for them, they should be probably going out and looking at more counties? Or maybe they could, could have a lower cost if they were doing more counties? I mean, and I know that's their business, not ours, so.
Right, and I think perhaps one of the reasons that they haven't expanded is because when this concept came about, it wasn't really a for-profit concept that bore this into reality. It came about because of law enforcement getting together with Centricare back in the 2015, 2016 time period and talking about how on a broader scale in the St. Cloud Central Minnesota area, we could better treat individuals that were underserved, and those included people that were in jail populations quite a bit. And so this was more of an effort on the part of Centricare and law enforcement and other county players to say, how can we, how can we serve these people better in a more efficient manner that's going to save both the taxpayers' money and Centricare money? Because when people are using these crisis services, both in Centricare's business and in the county's business, it's an expensive way to go about treating conditions that could be treated more efficiently with more regular, you know, routine visits and such like that. So I think that's one of the reasons that you're not seeing them try to go and grab business from some of these other providers, because they're really not interested in doing this as a for-profit venture, at least that's the way it was borne out.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, we do have some action that's requested here, one of the wishes of the board.
I move we approve and direct the board chair to sign.
Okay, motion to approve the contract, direct the chair to sign. And we have a second, we have any further discussion? Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion is carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next up, we have Nadine Inman, our treasurer. We need somebody on the canvassing board. You'll do it.
Oh, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. So that time of year, again, per state statute, we need to have a canvas board the second or third day after the primary election. I have it planned already for Thursday at 10 o'clock, the 13th. And I need two volunteers, and Commissioner Bowley is off the hook. Because he's on, he is running for reelection. So I need two volunteers willing to sit on the canvas board.
I'll be there, I'll be there on time.
Okay, thank, thank you.
I'll do it too.
Commissioner Pop, thank you. Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you, gentlemen, have a good day.
Very good, thank you.
I was wanting to late last time.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recess the regular board meeting and conduct the human services board meeting. And that should be a short one.
I'd like to call the human services board to order. Bob, is there any additions to the agenda?
No additions.
Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. To approve and amend the regular board minutes of July 21st, 2020. Everybody satisfied with the minutes?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Bob, you out there, we got anything else?
I do not, unless there are any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
Not today.
Not today, short and sweet, Bob, looks good.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, we'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay, okay, we reconvene a regular board meeting, and Monty Headley's got the next items. First one is consider appointment of St. Cloud Regional Airport Advisory Board.
Okay, well, of course, we had some discussion recently, committed a hole about this topic, and I think there's, you reached some consensus on who you're inclined to appoint as Benton County's two representatives to a St. Cloud Regional Airport Advisory Committee. And just as a reminder, these two folks would then potentially become members of the formal airport authority once the FAA has approved the transition of the airport from the city to the authority. So again, I think just looking for a motion to appoint those two representatives.
Mr. Chair, I move we appoint John Quaid and Kurt Hunstinger to the Airport Advisory Board.
Second, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second to appoint John Quaid and Kurt Hunstinger to the Airport Advisory Board. Discussion is.
Just that they're both very qualified, and we have two, two more. If some, one of these two gets disqualified for some reason or unable to serve, we have two more for backup, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion is carried, and we'll have to get a hold of them.
Probably what I'll do is, I'll get contact information for those two folks and forward that to whoever is kind of coordinating future meetings and make sure they're in the loop on that. So we'll make sure we've got that covered.
Okay.
Okay, next one is an appointee to the One Watershed One Plan discussions with Sherburne County. This is a request from Amanda at Benton Stolen Water, that you all appoint one of your, one person to meet with folks from Sherburne about watershed boundaries. I understand the Sherburne wants to start with a couple of the board members, members of the Benton SWCD, members of the Sherburne SWCD, for some informal discussions about watershed boundaries. So that's what they're looking for. And I don't, originally, there was going to be a meeting August 18th, apparently that's not going to occur. So just want to start today with appointing your representative.
So I got a question. Monty, is that going to be, like, is Sherburne County going to have a commissioner and a person from their watershed board also?
They, I saw a listing of who was going to be at this first meeting. It was going to be Commissioner Schmesen, Commissioner Foby, and then various staff from the Sherburne SWCD and Benton SWCD, and I suppose probably Bowser folks too. But that's who was from the board was going to be there, you know.
Yep.
How long are these discussions going to go on on this?
Well, we just had the one, so we just had the One Water One Plan with the Rum River, and it all depends on what they, how they go about their, not rules, but what their visions are. I mean, they had a couple of visions on, we met last, I don't know, right, Thursday after our last board meeting. And we had a set time, and we didn't get done because some of their visions, you got to realize that you get people in there that are non-agriculture and some recreational people, and they all have different visions, and some of them are pretty far out there, let me tell you. So, you know, you got to kind of have, I know a commissioner from Cannabik County was really questioning quite a few things that came across on the last one, so.
The only thing I can just add is I had a conversation with Bruce Messel, who's a Sherburne County administrator. It sounds like there's a little bit of concern from Sherburne about splitting their county up into too many subwatersheds.
Yeah.
And how they manage it, how they manage the funding. That's just a little more I'd share with you, so.
I also, I was on the Elk River watershed, and I think that's going to be the same thing you're going to see from the Sherburne SWCD. I really think that they're going to have, you know, they want to be in the big picture and do the whole work, so. I think it's a good deal that we do the smaller ones, but I don't know if it's going to be viable when we get down.
So we have, so we have to appoint one member from this board, probably shouldn't be, right, Mike going to the next year warrants.
Ed's been working on it.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to appoint Ed Pop.
I would second that one.
I got, I do have a lot of knowledge on what they did in the Elk River, you know, the watershed so far, so.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, good, thanks, Ed.
Okay, thanks a lot. Next, following up on the presentation at your last board meeting by Mr. De Mars regarding the golf course. So I contacted the county attorney's office and also our Department of Development. And this is a response I received from Michelle Meyer, Assistant County Attorney. I'm just trying to summarize a little bit of what her email says. She says she regards this as a private civil matter between neighbor and property owners, and the property owner should seek the advice of a private attorney, and of course, the county doesn't represent private interests. This is, she says the golf course is located in the city, so the county would not have jurisdiction over how the golf course does, conducts its business. Only other possibility would be is the golf course violating any conditions of a conditional use permit issued by the city. She recommends that the property owner seek the advice of private counsel at this time and pursue possibly a private civil action, so. And just to note, Mr. De Mars gave me a call, and I spoke with him yesterday, and I shared him essentially with what is in Michelle's email. I just want to, if I could just wrap up, is I also spoke with Roxanne, and Roxanne did not believe that there were any land use actions the county could take at this time, meaning under our development code, they would allow any intervention on behalf of the county, so. So again, I just updated Mr. Mars yesterday on what Michelle said.
Monty, I spoke with the city's administrators, and she said the same thing you're saying.
Okay, yeah.
They had contacted their lawyer too.
And I just told Mr. Mars, if something different came out of today's meeting, I would let him, let him know. So that's all I had on that subject.
So this is just information, there's no action?
Yes, sir, it's informational only, no action requested.
Person we want to speak to it.
I would like to speak if I may.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I hope you understand, we're not going to be involved in this at all, but you can go ahead, I guess, yeah. Do you want to, you understand that?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
It's just frustrating that's going back important to the county and city.
Yeah. Yeah.
Civil matter.
Yeah, it's a civil matter, that's the advice we have, so. We're going to leave it, we're going to leave it at that, okay?
I just don't believe that it's a civil matter.
Okay, well, that's, that'll be determined by someone else, not this board, thank you. Okay, business assistance criteria for cares funding.
Okay, so what led to this agenda, I mean, I got a call from Laura Kingas, y'all know Laura, she's on the Benton Economic Partnership. And she, of course, the recent BEP meeting, they agreed to administer on behalf of the county federal cares funds. So Laura called me, and she said, "Okay, what's the next steps? What's, what do we need to do, get going?" And I thought, well, you know, probably the BEP needs some big picture parameters from you all about how you'd like to see these resources spent. So give them the big picture, and then maybe they work out the specific details of what an application looks like, maybe how much money goes to each entity, things like that. So I have been getting plans from other counties, basically through MICA, and I attached a few of those. You have ones from Dakota, I think I got Sherburne Counties, I got Stearns County, Sherburne County, Candy Ojai, Dakota, and the city of South Rapids. And the list that you have in your packet, it's really just sort of taking all the ideas I saw and a few of my own and throwing them on this piece of paper. I certainly didn't expect that you would adopt them all. It's just sort of like a menu of possible ones that you could consider. And then again, that gets BEP started, and they can start working on a specific application process and timeline, and so on, so forth. So just looking for some feedback, and if your client to adopt some today, that's great. If you need more time and want to reconsider this at a future meeting, that is, of course, fine too.
So question I have, if we give some guidelines, that still gives some latitude to the BEP to add or subtract some things, doesn't it, is it not, or?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd hope that they would work within your guidelines. So in other words, you know, if you said clearly for-profit businesses only, then they wouldn't include nonprofits in that. They would try and stick as the best they could to the guidelines you gave them. Of course, if you want to make them more broad and more general, that's fine too. Let's just say, for example, you know, number four, it says employee 50 or fewer. Maybe you, you wouldn't do that, you wouldn't impose that. I saw that in quite a few of the applications. They seem, that seems to be kind of like the magic numbers, cutting off at 50. And I think they're, the bias is to try and get the assistance to small business, to small businesses. That clearly is the emphasis for other counties, what I'm seeing.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a good guideline, but I would hope that BEP would look at this and then come back to us with recommendations of what they would add or change to these specific guidelines.
So if that's the case, Mr. Chair, could we send a copy of this to the BEP board?
Absolutely, you bet.
Yeah.
So a little bit of back and forth, and get some consensus on, okay, that seems reasonable, yeah.
The other thought I had, Mr. Chair, was, you know, maybe, you know, BEP does part of it, you know, like the restaurants and bars or something, and then maybe the county retain, I'm just not sure if we expand the scope of this, how much BEP could handle too. So there's a concern there as well, but maybe we could do a segment. Maybe we could do a segment of it or.
I, I think that BEP would get a, a better understanding what they couldn't, couldn't handle. Once they go through this process and then throw whatever they can't handle back to us, of course, at the board.
I know we're kicking the can down the road, but it's, it's important to get it right too, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That was, yeah, and I, I had the same concern with, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
But.
Their timelines are pretty short.
There, that was my comment, was, you know, we got work and a cross timeline here too.
But by the next meeting, we could have an answer back and make it.
Um, let's see. When is the next BEP board meeting, Vicky? So it would be after your next board meeting?
So maybe the executive committee will have to get together or something, or this. This cares committee get together and give us some feedback before the next.
They, they have a committee set up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the BEP.
Who's kind of the best, who's the chair of the, of your, of that?
Of the cares committee or the BEP?
Care, cares, for BEP.
I don't know if they really have one.
Well, I'll just start out by sending it to Laura and Sandy.
Yeah.
And they can, they can send it out. And I'll copy John Herjes too, okay. Well, I'll send this to BEP and ask them to, to ponder it, re- reach them to consensus and then let us know. Are there, I'm just curious, before I send this to BEP, as you look down through this list of a lot of items, do you, do you find any of these objectionable? That, that really seem a problem that we, we shouldn't include?
The only, I'm wondering if, you know, like Sherburne County's got a minimum of two employees. I'm not sure why that is, but.
I don't know.
Sole proprietor or two shouldn't be dis.
I think it was sole proprietorship, say, for some reason they didn't want them, you know, two employees.
Yeah. But Sherburne, I think other counties that I'm reading here is, they're gonna do more extensive than we are. We should maybe talk about our scope again a little bit. One thought I had was, you know, BEP does the five hundred for the restaurants and stuff and then maybe. The county do something on its own through the loan fund or some other way, but, but don't, don't you agree that there's, the other counties are probably being more aggressive than we are?
One thing, one thing you might want to consider is just let BEP take applications and just see what they've got to work with. And then they can use that to decide how much money they give out. As if they get a ton of applicants, then maybe they gotta spread the money out. But if they get a few, maybe they could really focus it and give each one more. I guess it kind of depends on what the response is.
So the question I have is how's the other counties implement? What staff do they have that's gonna do all this work?
I think right now, what I'm hearing and seeing is that counties are still in the midst of developing all this. It's all a work in progress. And I know, I haven't seen that anyone has actually rolled anything on the street yet. It's all still being developed and discussed. And process is developing and so on.
Our deadline will be extended, be my, be my hope.
We certainly hope. You know, I, again, I learned in a recent MMB webinar that, again, the deadline is December first. There were some things floating around, it was December thirtieth, it's December first. Now, we're told by the MMB official that there's discussion at the federal level extending the deadline, but I don't think we should count on that. I think we should just plan on December first and, uh, not, not hope that the, the federal government extends that deadline.
I guess, I guess the one item I had a question on was item number ten. Uh, if, if they would receive funding from a city, I believe the city of Stock Rapids, I don't know if St. Cloud or Rice or anybody did, had some funds. For small business and they got some of that, that would exclude them from this?
Well, I, I, I think it's just, it's simply saying, look, we're not gonna give you money to pay for this exact same thing. I mean, maybe that seems obvious to a lot of people, but if you, you got money from the city for some specific purpose, well, weren't. BEP wouldn't give you money for the exact same purpose. Now, maybe, I don't know if you got, I, I think if you got some funding from the city, it wouldn't necessarily exclude you from BEP funding if it's something different. Or maybe let's just say the city money didn't cover all of your expenses, here's some more from BEP. Just no duplication.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, talking with the city of Stock Rapids, that's one thing that they were concerned about was double dipping. You know, making sure that other businesses get it before the ones that did receive it earlier.
So the application process should ask that question, I guess.
It should have that question in there if they receive funds.
Correct. Cause I imagine each one will have different, different amounts too, like, they might, might be limited to small amount in Stock Rapids, but might be a larger amount here, okay.
You know, sorry, Mr. Chair, you know, Stock Rapids, you know, like all their, all their small cities are getting funding to, to distribute all that. We should probably be more concerned about businesses outside of the city limits first. Let the cities take care of their businesses first. And then when the funding, if they don't use up all their funding and it comes back to us at that point in time, we can go ahead and look at that further.
That makes sense, yeah.
That'd be my.
I had the same comments and then Monty's comments, that if it didn't cover everything, our neighbors to the north, um. The, the city appears had some money and they were giving it out in increments of, I don't know how much each one got. And them businesses are allowed to go back and tap into the cities or the counties because it didn't cover some of their total, you know, total losses, so. But, you know, that's gonna take a lot of work on behalf of BEP to get that done. And I don't know if, if, you know, if they're gonna have the manpower to do that. You know, in the timeframe we're given.
Mr. Chair, I, that's why we're in the process of hiring an executive director there, but, you know, committee, I suggested to committee that they. Hire an attorney and a lawyer, or an attorney and accountant, because somebody's gonna have to do this work, you know.
You know, and, and I, oh, I should just mention one other thing is too, is, uh, I have contacted Michelle about drafting an agreement between the county and BEP. About how this will work. And, uh. And it includes in there a provision that BEP can use cares funding for its administrative costs.
Okay.
Of, of doing this. So, uh, hopefully Michelle have, she's quite busy these days, but hopefully she'll have some time to get to it quite soon here.
Monty, was that ten or fifteen that goes to the BEP?
Well, initially, you all said ten percent, so roughly five hundred thousand to BEP. I should just mention one other thing on the subject of cares funding is, is Jackie and Amber right now are working on assembling what our cares costs have been. From, uh, March through current. And, uh, soon, hopefully I'll be able to tell you. Uh, of our five million of cares funding, how much we can claim versus how much would be left over for BEP. I think certainly at a minimum, that of course, that ten percent will be there. It might be more, it might be more. But hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll tell you specifically. We've got to actually file our first report with the state on August eleventh. Of what we spent up to this point. So we should have a good number for you here fairly soon.
So maybe the next board meeting, we can get, get that number, we can decide whether or not.
I think that's very possible, right, yeah, to give you a sense of what is that number, yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, Monty, so will you be forwarding to the BEP of what Sherburne, Stearns, uh, all these other people?
Absolutely, if, I will certainly do that. I, I can send them this entire packet.
Okay.
You bet. I'll give them the whole packet.
That'll give them a little assistance.
Yep.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, that's good. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have, uh, commissioner meeting updates. I'll start because it's July and we didn't have any meetings in, most, a lot of our boards that I threw on, don't have meetings in, in July, so I don't have any report on. Anybody got anything?
Yeah, I can, I can go.
Okay, go ahead.
On, uh, on the fourteenth, we had, uh. No, on the twenty-first, excuse me, we had our library board meeting that night via Zoom and it was, uh. Wow, it was pretty intense and pretty, uh, long. We came for, some of the, the people had, wanted a, uh, statement from the library on racism and all that other stuff. And by the time we ended up, a motion came to table it, the discussion got pretty long and I felt pretty. I felt sorry for the chair, Commissioner Phoby, because she was trying to control this thing and it was, you know, rattling out of control. So we tabled it to, we're gonna have a work session where we're gonna be in person to discuss this here on, uh, I think it's on the thirty-first, maybe. And then we approved the budget. The budget will be, will have a, a decrease coming to the counties. Probably not as much as I thought it would be, but it is a decrease of, you know, I think a few thousand bucks, maybe several thousand dollars for our contribution. We took, uh, uh, one two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar CD out of our reserves and put towards it and we carried. Two-hundred-thousand dollars in profits from last year, from twenty-twenty forward to the twenty-twenty-one budget, so. You know, it's roughly four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and, and just like everybody else, they have, you know, an increase in COLAs and everything else that went with that. On the expense, you know, uh, we're, the expense is about the same and we're seeing some revenue decreases, especially in fines. Man, fines are down sixty thousand bucks, you know, because they're just not enforcing them. So, um, that was that. And then, uh, I'll let, um. On the twenty-third, we had the BEP, let Commissioner Bowley talk about that one. And then I had One Water One Plan that night and I kind of touched on some of that stuff that, you know, we keep going back. Once again, like Commissioner Phoby was the chair and she was a no-show, she couldn't get on, so we had Commissioner Reynolds from Malax take over. And, uh. There's, there's a lot of different views on this and I think it would help if you could meet in person because, um. You get, one says this and then another one says that and you forget who said what, you know, and, and who's really credible and who's not credible. And the one part I did like at this last one is we really eliminated, um, like Bowser and SWCD's comments. You know, because they have no vote in this and they have no stake in this. So we've kind of eliminated, unless we asked them for that comment, they didn't, didn't participate. And I, I think the, the Bowser person was maybe a little put out that we kind of said, well, we don't, we don't really want to hear from you right now. We want to, we'll ask you when we want to hear from you, so, um, that one went, went on, uh, for quite some time, so. Um, that was all that I have.
Okay, I have one question for you. On, on the budget at the library, did the budget itself go up?
Yes, the budget went up. I don't have the stuff with me, but it went up a.
How much?
Couple percent.
Couple, okay.
Was the expenditures, but then we offset it with reserves.
Who took the hit?
You mean?
For the increase in their portion?
Uh, Noel Counties, we made sure that Noel County had an increase.
Oh, okay.
Some have a small decrease.
Okay, with all, from fund balance, yeah, okay.
From the fund balance, so.
All right, good.
Um, and I think that's.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of gonna be the trend unless we have, um. You know, new board members come on. I think that the finance committee is made up, you know, you know, Spencer of the Commissioners plus two. And, uh, for a while, we kind of sat there and we couldn't get any ground and now we're getting some ground that we don't, we don't need seven and a half million dollars in the reserves in my book.
That's, yeah, that's good, especially at this time.
Right, and we can use some of that to offset that.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, BEP, the main discussion was around hiring our new executive director and we had a lot of applications, like eighteen or twenty, something like that and. And then we've got it whittled down to eleven and now we're meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. We're gonna. Everybody in the committee submitted four, we're gonna start figuring out who we're gonna interview, so we're trying to expedite that process, given this, this cares funding challenge and all that, so. But there's quite a bit of talent applying. Good news about a down economy is there's more talent available, so.
Yeah.
That's about all I have.
Okay. Did you say, Jake, did you say anything about the hop farm at all?
No.
It's a dead deal, huh?
Yeah, there's nothing going on out there.
Oh, we had a WRAC meeting with, uh, the, with the NRCS last Tuesday. And we've kind of, we kind of, the, the next topics they're going on, they're, we had to rate cropland and, and farmsteads and. And we had to rate forests and pasture land and then they go through, we had to rate them one through five, uh, each one of them for. Soil quality and water quality and livestock production and air quality. So each one of them, we had a rate, so that's something they're gonna work on in the next couple of years, three, four years, that's. And with the NRCS, Pat was there, we gave a, just to put in perspective what happened over the last, say, uh, fifteen years or so. Uh, like in, in two oh-five, they had five contracts for like two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. Last year, they had fifteen contracts for a one-point-three million. And a lot of that money stays, you know, with contract and a lot of it's manure pits and whatever, you know, do with. And then a lot of that money stays in our own county. I think the, the big thing right now is, is, is manure and air quality. That was the two, two big things. Uh, and soil conservancy, uh, trying to keep the soil in place. A lot of people are getting upset with the, the smell, you know, that was the big thing, and the water quality. And they give a report on Little Rock Lake a little bit, uh. Too bad it had to be such a dry year, you know, and that, that kind of didn't help out there, but. They say it's better than it was, uh, three, four years ago.
Oh, my, by far.
Yeah, because when was that? Back in about twenty-twelve or something like twenty-thirteen where you couldn't hardly drive by there? So, that's all, Mr. Chair.
I had a couple of meetings. Uh, one was a two-hour virtual leadership training meeting and that was very long, I can tell you that. About an hour and a half and I was ready to be done. You don't get a lot out of those virtual meetings versus in-person. The other one was the Central EMS Region Board. They also talked about, we get a lot of funding from the seatbelt, law enforcement for the seatbelts and the funding is down like forty percent. You know, because they're not writing out a lot of tickets for use of non-seatbelt people. And then the other one is that Operation Super Soaker disinfectants. Half of them are in and the other half should be in within a week or two, so we will be getting one probably in a couple of weeks. The first ones are going out to all small counties that are not affiliated with the hospitals. So all EMS and all that that are affiliated with the hospitals are gonna get theirs, uh, this week. And then hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll get ours, so that we can do some training with, you know, Rice, Foley, Stock Rapids, everybody. And the jail too. So, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, what was the, you said you had the two-hour training, what, where, what board was that on?
That was the, uh, Central Region Emergency Service Board.
Okay, all right.
That was a long meeting.
Yeah, Warren and I went through that, you know, on the board. It is very long.
Yeah.
Three hours.
Too much Zoom, yeah.
Yeah, the first hour was interesting after that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Anything under commissioner concerns? Okay, we have some committee of the halls set up, we're not.
The one that we see here, the GSDC meeting of investors and partners, August twenty-seventh. And that starts at eight and it is being done by Zoom. So, uh, Vicky, do our board members have this email with the link or should we forward it to them? We will forward you the email, it's got the Zoom link in it.
It was supposed to be a check, yeah. Zoom, huh?
Well, you know, it does, okay. On the email I'm seeing here, it says location to be, I'm sorry, never mind. It's done by Zoom, it's gonna be remote. August twenty-seventh, eight to ten. And that's all we have.
At eight o'clock?
That's what it says, yes, eight, eight AM.
Okay.
Eight AM to ten AM.
Okay, I had seven thirty to nine thirty, so it must have changed that.
Yeah. Guess in the old days, when they did a little light breakfast, they'd start earlier and.
Yeah.
Things have changed.
Yeah, bring your own breakfast now.
So that's all we had for cows.
Motion to accept the committee of the hall, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion is second to accept the committee of the hall for August twenty-seventh, a discussion. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion's carried. Is there any other business to come before the board? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion's carried, we are adjourned.